Salam aleikum everyone. I don't know if I can say good morning, good afternoon, good evening. Some of you are waking up, some of you are ready to go to sleep, and some of you is the middle of the day. So we are really happy to have all of you here. So glad you could make it. We're going to begin, Insha Allah, with an introduction to G I S, the Global Association of Islamic Schools, by Brother Zafar Ahmed, who is spearheading the initiative. So Brothers Zafar, please go ahead.
Jazakallah, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Sister Sophia, is my shared screen up at the moment?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay, Masha Allah. As I step, thank you very much for accepting our invitation and to be here this afternoon. This is part of the G I S program called the Scholar Series, where we try to feature a scholar each month on a topic that we believe will resonate with our membership. So before Sister Sophia gets into the program, I'll just take two minutes to introduce the Global Association of Islamic Schools to you. Many of you obviously are members of G I S and don't need this, but we do have some members from outside who are joining just for this particular event. And so I'd like to just take this opportunity to extend a warm welcome to everyone and also to introduce the organization to everybody, Insha Allah. So we're a non-profit voluntary membership association, and we seek to bring all Islamic school associations globally together under the banner of G I S, so that we could collaborate and share best practice. We aspire to co-create the future for Islamic education, and this is mainly in the K to 12 Islamic school sector, Insha Allah. So we have a ever-growing global membership base on a daily basis. We have additional members that join us. We currently have members in 16 different countries, Masha Allah. We took some time to design our logo and our name, and every element in our logo has a level of symbolism that denotes the work we wishing to do and what we aspire to do, Insha Allah. We even paid attention to the colors in our logo and what those symbols means. We've initiated a strategic planning process, and in drafting and crafting this, we've worked out what we believe our vision and our mission is going to be, and what we want to serve and what we wish to bring in terms of value to Islamic schools throughout the world, Insha Allah. And so we will strive to deliver these, Insha Allah. We're driven by a set of core values, and because we're a global organization, diversity, generosity, compassion, we're underpinned by the values and the teachings of the Quran and the Sunnah and all that we do, Insha Allah. We are busy with a number of projects as I speak to you. We're in the process of registering a non-profit entity. We're developing a website that has a number of interactive features in it, Insha Allah, when it is ready. So teachers and boards of governors and scholars will all have an opportunity to interact, share resources, upload resources, download resources, Insha Allah. We have a very active WhatsApp group, where we have a lot of exchanges of ideas, and we post questions and provocations and generate ideas for sharing. The Scholar Series is one of the initiatives of the G I S, Insha Allah. We're also working tirelessly in another committee, a subcommittee of G I S, to host a global conference to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the first ever conference on Islamic education that was held in Makkah in 1977. Very exciting, Insha Allah. We'll share some information as that takes shape. We're also busy planning a retreat in Cape in Turkey in October 2022 this year, Insha Allah. And the purpose of that, amongst other things, will be to do some strategic planning for the Global Association of Islamic Schools and also to do the full planning for the global conference in 2025 to commemorate the 50th anniversary, Insha Allah. We're also trying to establish a number of subcommittees, a team to collaborate on integration, for example. And perhaps after today's meeting, there'll be some interest in creating a group just for governors, a WhatsApp group or some sort of collaborative group just for governors across the world to collaborate, Insha Allah. So thank you very much again. It's a pleasure to have our guests and to have you all on this meeting this afternoon. I look forward to Dr. Aida's presentation. Jazakallah, thank you very much, Sophia.
Thank you, Brothers Zafar. What I'd like to do is I'm going to introduce Dr. Aida, and I'm going to ask that if everyone could stay with their microphones muted while she's presenting, and if you have questions, please do, please do type them into the chat, and we will get to them, Insha Allah, after she's finished. We're very, very fortunate to have her with us. Dr. Aida is an academic program advisor of first-year and at-risk students and a lecturer in Human Resources and Management for the School of Business at Western Sydney University. She serves on the Academic Senate Committee for the Board of Trustees. Her doctoral research examined the connection between professional identity and governance in Islamic schools and more broadly, the independent schooling and not-for-profit sectors. Her research is located in the behavioral, organizational, and Islamic fields of inquiry and particularly focused on behavioral and Islamic governance renewal. Dr. Aida has published a book chapter on a hybrid approach for the governance of Islamic schools and is currently working on several publications exploring further the implications of a governance framework for Islamic school boards, governance renewal, and the role of professional identity in Islamic school boards. She also specializes in identity theory, leadership, policy and practice, ethics, and social entrepreneurship. Dr. Aida is passionate about teaching and learning in higher education. She's dedicated to ensuring student success through curriculum renewal. If you could, you, your microphone, please. Dr. Aida engages with community-based organizations assisting in strategic planning, management structures, and community well-being. Dr. Aida, please go ahead.
Jazakallah khair, Sister Sophia. Salam aleikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. I'm truly humbled to be invited to engage in active discussion with everyone at the Global Association of Islamic Schools. It's a privilege, it's an honor to be invited to this group and to speak to everyone and with everyone. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. All praise is to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, the King, the Master, the Sustainer. Salaatu wa salaam ala Sayyidina Muhammad wa ala ali wa ashabi ajma'in. I ask Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, to Rabbi shraha li sadr'i wa yasir li amri wa halul uqda'tan min lisani yafkahu kawli amma ba'd. What I'd like to do to start this presentation is just share my screen, Insha Allah. I have, in the world of academia, we focus on PowerPoint presentations. So I'll be sharing a presentation with you today. Can everyone see that?
Yes, we can.
So today, I'm going to be discussing the role of professional identity in Islamic school boards. And I think it's very interesting whenever I say professional identity and connect that to Islamic school boards, it captures a lot of interest from particularly leaders within the Muslim community. And the purpose of today's presentation is to give you a background and an impetus for my research, my doctoral research focused on understanding how professional identity of directors influences the governance of Islamic school boards. And the study focused on Islamic schools in New South Wales, Australia. I want to first, just quickly, very quickly, I'm trying to manage time. So I want to just quickly give you a bit of background information about how Australian Islamic schools work in terms of funding, in terms of compliance, just to give you an understanding of the types of governance structures that exist within Australian Islamic schools. So in Australia, Australian Islamic schools operate as not-for-profit entities, and they're governed by a board of directors. His role, according to the mandatory guidelines, is responsible for the oversight of strategic and operational efficiencies, the development of policies and procedures, funding expenditure, property and infrastructure, and in particular, education and administrative compliance for funding continuity. Islamic schools in Australia are quite unique to other schools within other Anglo-American jurisdictions because they are heavily funded by Commonwealth and state governments. In fact, 80% of school funding is received from Commonwealth and state governments, unlike other areas in Anglo-American jurisdictions, particularly in the United States, where a lot of schools have to seek private funds in order to operate. Now, funding continuity, funding in terms of government funding, state and federal, means that funding continuity means that there is a prohibition of for-profit operations. So essentially, Islamic schools must not operate for profit. So all of the funding they receive must be used and expended for the purpose of schooling, purely for the purpose of schooling. And that includes things like property, infrastructure, teaching and learning, resources, and other initiatives that are within the structure of the school. Now, I often get asked, and this is, I think, a really critical part of understanding why governance is so critical, and in particular, researching directors is so critical to the continuity of the Islamic schooling sector. So I often get asked about the impetus for researching directors in Islamic school boards. Now, the first is to determine the issues impacting the governance of independent schools in Australia. And there is definitely been a lot of reports and discussions about inefficiencies within governance frameworks of the independent schooling sector more broadly. That includes Christian schools, the Catholic schooling sector in particular, and other faith-based schools. Now, the impetus for Islamic schools is because of the Commonwealth's response to compliance issues in Islamic schools, which focused really on creating addendums in reporting standards. Now, what I mean by that is issues that emerged in Islamic schools, you know, they were not immune from regulatory and media scrutiny. A lot of the, a lot of environments, particularly issues like Islamophobia, negative media reporting about the Muslim community, influenced the way the Commonwealth's response to compliance issues in Islamic schools was being dealt with. So essentially, in Australia, Islamic schools received a lot of attention and media reports regarding compliance issues with governance in particular and funding expenditure. And essentially, what that did is it put Islamic schools in the spotlight. And the government's moves and response to compliance issues only really started to emerge when the issues in Islamic schools specifically came to light. Okay. I think that the two main impetus for researching directors beyond all of the discussions about, you know, why Islamic schools in the media, why all of this discussion about issues in Islamic schools when there are many issues happening in other faith-based schools, beyond those, Islamic schools are very complex, dynamic, and unique institutions. And from a researcher's perspective, from a Muslim researcher's perspective, that is something to be celebrated. The complexity, the dynamism, and the unique attributes of Islamic schools really allows Islamic schools to stand out among other sectors. And the most important impetus for researching directors, and this is, so anything in green is a part of my final reflections, just so you know, in the presentation. Islamic schools adopt an Islamic ethos that manifests the attitudes and aspirations of the Muslim community. And the Muslim community in particular strive to instill the values, principles, and practices of the Holy Quran and Hadith, and have an ambition to translate those values, principles, and practices to their children, okay, to Muslim children. So this is a really important part of the purpose of understanding governance in the Islamic schooling sector in particular. The next part of the presentation is going to focus on, okay, so what is professional identity? And this is the question that is asked very often. And there are two perspectives. The first perspective that I'm sharing is the Western scholarship perspective, because I think it's really important for us to understand a professional identity from a Western lens. And then the second perspective that I'm going to give is a perspective based on the data that I collected in the research. So the perspective of directors and Islamic schools that I interviewed. So according to Western scholarship, professional identity is a symbolic part of one's identity when we're looking at, you know, understanding the sense of self. Fritzen, who is the founder of the Definition for Professionalism, looked at professional identity as being specialized knowledge and skills resulting from formal education and training. Other scholars have said that professional identity is a combination of multiple identities that are held concurrently by individuals. And then a thematic analysis of professional identity literature, I found that essentially, professional identity is one's values, attributes, beliefs, knowledge, skills, experiences, and behaviors. So essentially, what the thematic analysis of the literature did was really broaden the scope of professional identity beyond something that would be specialized knowledge and skills to something that is a lot more valuable in terms of understanding how one carries his or her position within the workplace. Okay? And so when we talk about things like values, attributes, and beliefs, we're looking at one's professional identity from a behavioral lens. Something else that was really important in the research was understanding Muslim identity. Because when we think of professional identity from the perspective of values, attributes, and beliefs, and we make connections with the participants who were Muslim directors and the parents who were Muslim parents and the teachers who were Muslim teachers, it was really important for me to capture an understanding of Muslim identity from an Islamic worldview perspective. And therefore, I used the Islamic worldview that Sayyid Muhammad Muqib Al-A'tas has written extensively about, essentially, according to myself, according to Al-A'tas, according to an Islamic worldview, according to my very humble understanding of an Islamic worldview. One's Muslim identity is firstly, having knowledge about the reality of life through divine revelation, so through the connection with the Quran and the Hadith. Essentially, there is an understanding in Western society that we are all bound by what we call, particularly in the business sector, a social contract. And that social contract is about ensuring stewardship, ensuring servant-based leadership and other components of behavior when it comes to leaders within organizations. But a Muslim identity, according to Al-A'tas, we are individuals who are bound by an individual contract with Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And that individual contract with Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala determines our purpose, attitudes, and actions. So essentially, an individual contract is underpinned by submission. And so we act as a servant of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. We ensure trust and responsibility. We lead according to Allah's will, and we maintain social justice through stewardship. Essentially, a Muslim identity incorporates the Islamic principles of Tauhid, Ahsan, Iman, Ikhlas, and Shura, and fosters Islamic values like Bir, Khair, Taqwa, and Hikmah, just to name a few. I'm then going to move on to, so we now know that professional identity includes a lot of behavioral elements that are very critical to forming one's identity in terms of a professional setting. Okay? And Muslim identity, when it comes to people who identify as Muslim or who are Muslims, really helps us understand more deeply how one's values, a Muslim's values, attributes, and beliefs really guide the way they engage in the workplace or in professional settings, engage in things like decision-making, engage in things like practice, and engage in leadership, engage in management. Now, professional identity of directors, this is the next component. And we're starting now to get into the really robust and rigorous understanding of what the data exposed. Okay? What was really interesting about the research was that when, while interviewing directors, they developed a professional identity from their work on the board. And this is a really critical part of the research because each director was a professional in his or her own right. So a director, when I say that, I mean a director was a doctor, a lawyer, a pharmacist, an engineer, a community leader. So each director that was interviewed was a professional in their own right outside of the board, outside of the scope of the board. But what was really interesting is when asking them to think about professional identity and define it in their terms, the expectation in the research was that they would define it based on their profession. The outcome of the research was that they defined it from their work on the board. Okay, and this is a really important point. And following a robust and rigorous analysis of the data that involved incorporating an Islamic worldview to really interpret the data, I found that professional qualifications and expertise, values, attributes, and beliefs, including Muslim values and Muslim identity, were the elements of professional identity of directors. Okay? So when we think of professional identity of directors in Islamic schools, we think of those three elements, those three categories of elements. All right, so when we say professional qualifications and expertise, how was, what was it that made me develop that interpretation? Statements from directors like being an expert in education when responding to a question about defining professional identity, having professional qualifications, qualified in compliance, having the skills to understand governance. All right, all of these statements gave, and there were many more statements, but all of these statements gave a strong indication and interpretation that professional qualifications and expertise were important elements of professional identity in boards of Islamic schools. Next, values, attributes, and beliefs. Now, all of these values, attributes, and beliefs are words that directors used, okay, when talking to me during the interviews. So for example, and there was a pattern, and I'd just like to just give you an understanding of how we gather the pattern. Okay? So for example, a director who used the word integrity to define professional identity, then use the word empathetic. Okay? Then use the word respect. And so that gave me an understanding of that person's behavior in terms of decision-making on the board, in terms of governance practice on the board. Other directors would use the word open-minded. Okay? And then in terms of attributes, they would use open-minded aligned with strategic, and then strategic aligned with power. And that gave me an indication of the behavior of that particular director in terms of his or her decision-making on the board. And then we have Muslim identity. How did we, how did I gather an understanding of the director's Muslim identity? Using words, again, to define professional identity, being a good Muslim as Muslims and for the sake of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And what that did to some directors, some participants, is that reminded of their obligation to serve on the board for the sake of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And what it further did, and this was a very interesting, it was a very interesting, like, what we call a lightbulb moment in research, was it uncovered Islamic principles as inherent elements of governance in Islamic school boards that really led to the development of an Islamic governance framework that I have figured in my thesis. Okay? Now, all of that conversation about the research and to give you an understanding of, you know, how the research was undertaken, a background, an impetus, a bit about the findings, particularly on professional identity, although the thesis definitely has a lot of other findings and is very complex in terms of documenting participants' voices and experiences. But all of that allows us, I think, now to really narrow down to the role of professional identity in Islamic school boards. Okay? And each point in this slide that I'm presenting to you is based on the analysis of the data. So this is what the data has said. Okay? So professional qualifications and expertise elements, those elements of professional identity were really used for compliance-focused practices. Okay? And that was primarily for funding and registration continuity. And can I just stress that compliance, professional qualifications, and expertise appeared to be the dominant elements of governance in the data? So in other words, the findings stated that directors really focused on, and this is part of the the I've lost my train of thought. No, I haven't. This is part of the selection of directors when they, when boards are selecting new representatives onto the board, new members of the board. Okay? There was a strong focus on professional qualifications and expertise and the purpose of that because of fears of non-compliance. Because in Australia, 8% of funding is sought. Funding is critical to the continuity of Islamic schools. Okay? The types of values, attributes, and beliefs steed governance practices in the boardroom. So if you remember in the previous slide on values, attributes, and beliefs, I gave you the example of connecting values, the value the director used, the attribute, and the belief together really defined how governance practice, that director engaged in governance practice. And so those attributes, values, and beliefs really steered the practices in the boardroom. And then there's the element of reflections on directors' purpose, attitudes, and actions. And essentially, what I'm saying is that their purpose, attitudes, and actions was their Muslim identity. And what the data analysis found was that failed to translate into the work of some boards. Okay, so that's where the gap is. The gap is that although Muslim identity was very prominent in the behavior of directors, it failed to translate into the work of some boards because there was so much focus on compliance. Essentially, the thesis has developed a focus on governance renewal in Islamic school boards. Based on the findings, we understand that directors are aware of their role as Muslims, their role as servants, their role as stewards. However, there are However, there are impediments to allowing them to really follow that line of follow that line of social justice, follow that line of ethics, follow that line of Amana because of the governance structure that they're following essentially. So when I talk about governance structures, I'm talking about the Western frameworks in Australia in particular, or the mandatory governance guidelines that boards have to follow, that appear to be very ambiguous and generic, okay? Essentially, they, the directors in Islamic school boards who were interviewed in the study, some of which lacked the complexity to address nuances in education, behaviour and organisational structure because they were hindered by the governance structure and confined to the governance structure that they adopted in the school, okay? Mainly, they follow a universal system. And this is the problem, they follow a universal system that safeguards eligibility for registration and funding continuity. And they deploy policies and procedures to meet compliance standards in all areas of schooling, including in Islamic education. What's important to note is that all of these issues in terms of governance are really, and I'll reiterate, that they're really hindered by the mandatory governance guidelines that they deploy within their schools. So governance renewal is about developing a profound understanding of one's purpose, attitudes and actions, as well as the need for cooperation, consultation and oneness of purpose. So essentially, governance renewal, particularly in Islamic school boards, is about going back to the grassroots of the teachings of the Prophet, alayhi salatu salam. Going back to the divine revelation of the Quran. Going back to reflecting about one's identity, one's Muslim identity and essentially one's purpose. And the only way to do that in terms of governance renewal is to have oneness of purpose, so to unite as a group. After all of that discussion about governance, I think it's really important to highlight in my final reflections, I was really inspired by Ibn Khaldun's Al-Mukaddam. And essentially, it is a call to the Islamic schooling sector to really think about Ibn Khaldun's paragraph on consultation and cooperation. So by their very nature, Ibn Khaldun states that mankind needs the cooperation of others to satisfy all their needs. Such cooperation requires firstly consultation and then association and the things that follow after it. Dealing with people when there is oneness of purpose may lead to mutual affection. And when purposes differ, they may lead to strife and altercation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ida. We have already some questions that have been, that have been asked by those who registered. I don't know if those people are here with us this morning, but you know, when you, when you talk, when you did your research and then you came up with this hybrid model, I don't know if you had the opportunity to go into it even further, but one of the questions that's been asked was how can leaders, and I think you began to address this a little bit, how can leaders keep their Islamic morals and ethics in relation to love for your brother, what you love for yourself on school boards, which advocate professionalism through secular lens, through secular lens?
Very good question. It's a very good question and it's not a very difficult one to answer. The, the understanding that, you know, as an Islamic schooling sector, we are governed within a model developed by institutions, okay? So in other words, government is institutions. And so advocacy to allow people who are in the field of research and practitioners in particular, this is, this comes back to oneness of purpose. If we are a united voice and we are in agreement of, you know, what we want as a sector, then I think the discussions with government in terms of changes to policy is something that can be achieved, particularly because the governance standards, if we look at governance standards based on Western models, they are very open to interpretation, but yet they are addendums to really steer people into a direction of compliance and focus on expenditure of funding, okay? Funding is the key, critical, and this is an issue that scares directors in Islamic school boards. And I just want to share my reflections on why they fear the issue of funding, okay? And so, which is why they focus on compliance so much. The Islamic schooling sector is nowhere near as well-developed and well-advanced as schooling sectors, say in the Catholic sector or the Christian sector or Judeo-Christian sectors. We are essentially in Western, I'm talking in, sorry, I must take a step back. I'm talking in Anglo-American jurisdictions. We are a fairly young sector, okay? And so considering the extensive longevity of other sectors. And so it's really important that we continue, okay? Continue the vision of schooling, continue the vision of Islamic education. This is a really critical point. And so directors, when they focus so much on compliance, because there are so many different dynamics on boards, dynamics on boards in terms of personality in particular, dynamics on boards in terms of the purpose of a founding director to remain on the board, dynamics of boards in terms of why, you know, a group of five, 10, 12 people have come together, established a school and sit on the board. And so all of these factors are really critical in terms, in terms of how we reflect that discussion onto regulatory bodies, so onto governments. If we present ourselves as, you know, a board of directors that is unique, that is dynamic, that aligns with the ethos, that aligns with the values and we unite on that front. In other words, if we renew governance, then people in government, people practitioners in education departments will start to listen. And something that I particularly just want to bring people's attention to, the discussion about Islamic education, in particular within the last decade, has really changed the way governments listen to the Islamic schooling sector. I know particularly here in Australia, that schools have been given more opportunity to engage more funding into Islamic education within the Islamic schooling sector, okay? Whereas in the past, there was a really hard focus, a strong focus on mainstream curriculum. But because of advocates who are really explaining reasons behind implementing Islamic education into mainstream curriculum, okay? And blending Islamic education into mainstream curriculum, we're starting to see changes. We have degrees in Islamic education now within our Western universities and these are big steps. So when there's oneness of purpose, there is opportunity for change and we must never shy away from that opportunity. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Ida. Another question, so in Australia, the sector you studied was primarily in Australia. And you said 80% of the funding does come from the government, right, for those schools? What kind of oversight do they employ when they, are those, do those funds come with some strings? And in which areas, is it in the curriculum, the teaching and learning area? Or does it go to the boards as well, the governance?
Yeah. So here in Australia, there are mandatory governance standards that directors have to follow. In terms of expenditure of funding in Australia, funding needs to be spent. So firstly, before we talk about funding, let's talk about the entity itself. So the entity is a not-for-profit entity, must be the school. So in other words, if we have, if we say we have, I'll use the name that I think doesn't exist in Australia, Al-Buraka School. The entity must be registered as Al-Buraka Islamic School. It cannot be registered, it cannot be a subsidiary of an association. So it cannot be the Islamic Council of, the Islamic Council of Australia and then be a subsidiary company, it can't, it has to be registered as a not-for-profit. That's the first rule. The second rule under Islamic governance, under school governance is that directors have oversight of the expenditure of funding for the purpose of the school. So all of the funds must benefit the school. Something interesting about the Australian dynamic is any surplus of funding that is left over must go back to the government. So essentially, what Islamic schools often do is they ensure that they have an opportunity to broaden schooling, broaden campuses, and so they always seek to, they always seek for infrastructure, property, to purchase new property in order to build new campuses and broaden their schools.
Okay. And a question from someone who's Sister Maryam, I don't know if you'd like to ask the question yourself. You're welcome to unmute your microphone and ask.
Salaam alaikum, Dr. Ida. I'm very familiar with your work. I'm an amazing person personally. I have met you and I am a great fan of your work. One of the biggest questions that I have is, and I know that you mentioned the having a oneness in vision and making sure that that sort of works in collaboration with the whole entire school, including of course, the all stakeholders, including the teachers, the students, the community. What I wanted to ask was, is it possible to develop such an agreement with an Islamic ethos in the school while maintaining the governance successfully? Because we understand that the governance sort of takes a hold of certain impertinent issues within the school. Is there an ability for the school itself to, to sort of take charge of where the direction of funding may go in regards to the Islamic understanding and creating that oneness and expanding that oneness within the school?
Thank you, Sister Maryam. It's lovely that you are here and joining us tonight, thank you so much. The, Maryam, the discussion about can we govern in Islamic schools and align governance with the Islamic ethos? Essentially, the governance structure should be designed around the Islamic ethos of the school. This is the problem. This is the issue. The issue is that the governance framework doesn't align, or I shouldn't say doesn't align because that, you know, in says that I'm saying all schools, I'm not going to say that, it's not right. But what I would say is that some schools, there is a misalignment between the governance structure and the ethos. And I just want to really bring everyone's attention to Dr. Nadir Ghamrawi's thesis that talked about Islamic ethos and espoused values really. Because that will give you a really, really interesting understanding of how to align leadership structures within Islamic schools to espoused values and ethos, okay? So when we have an alignment of, or when boards design their governance frameworks, there is no right way or wrong way of designing governance frameworks. I think, and this is a constant reflection, reflective process when answering questions, but Sophia's question about, you know, how funding is extended in Australia in terms of oversight. I think what's really important is that in Australia, Islamic schools, although they are required to follow mandatory governance standards, the government doesn't say you must design your framework like this. Okay, essentially, and this is a really important point to make. Essentially, governance in Islamic schools, governance in other schools, governance in general, is a box ticking exercise. What the government wants to see is that you are compliant through paper and pen. So when we go through accreditation processes and can I just say that I have done, in my, in my previous work to academia, I worked as a business manager in an Islamic school and so I'm very familiar with the accreditation process. There is a lot of information that goes into and that is documented in order to achieve registration and funding continuity. And all of these things are, and I'm talking about the administrative section, but all of these things are really just rhetoric. They don't translate into practice because the governance framework isn't aligning with the school's ethos. So this rhetoric that's happening within Islamic schools in order to gain funding, and can I just say that in Australia, we have funding from the government. In other countries, there are funding from donors. And so there is that sense of accountability and compliance for donors, people who donate funds to schools. And that therefore, reporting is really important. But in terms of a governance structure, our governance structure should be designed based on the school's ethos. So the first step is for a board to come together and say, what is the school's ethos? And that ethos needs to translate firstly in the board. People look at governance as a hierarchical structure. And I really, really would like to invite schools to consider, where is your governance framework? Where does it sit within your hierarchical structure? Is your governance framework at the top of your structure? And then you have the principal or the executive director or the chief executive officer, and then you have the deputies, and then you have, you know, middle managers, and then you have teachers, and then you have, why is it at the top? Why is it at the top? Governance is a foundation, it's at the bottom because it keeps the building together. And this is something that Ibn Khaldun spoke about in his Mukaddamah. That you can't build walls of a house and you can't place a roof on a house without having a foundation. The roof will collapse. And so the foundation, the governance needs to be at the bottom. And then you build the school from the foundation up.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ida. Yeah, I won't get into the specifics of the Sisna standards right now, but those are the types of things that we are asking schools to make sure that they're addressing when they become accredited with Sisna. We have a section, entire section of governance and how it should be structured. But Brother Adris has his hand up, I'd like him to have the opportunity, inshallah.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi barakatuh. Dr. Ida, and Safiq, it's good to see you. Jazakumullah for an excellent presentation. I like the research work that you have done. In my experience, there has been a, almost like a hiatus or a gap between the board and often the management of the school. So my question is, should the role of the board be one of oversight or support? Because I think as individuals, some of them feel that their role is to be vigilant, to monitor and control. And as a result, the autonomy of the head teacher is often impinged. And this professionalism is compromised, you know? And that relationship is very, very critical, that of the board and especially of the school management.
Thank you so much, Brother Adris. I really think that, you know, we, in terms of the language, when we think about the word oversight and then when we add the word control to that, that statement, so oversight and control. I think we really need to think about why we're using the word oversight with the word control. I like the word support, Brother Adris. There is definitely a disconnection and this is something, this is another very big part of the thesis. There really is a disconnection between the board, not just with the management, but with the entire school community. And let's have, let's really allow ourselves to open this dialogue, this very important dialogue about the disconnection between boards and school communities, whether it be management, teachers or general staff, students or parents. And this is not something that is just specific to the Australian schooling sector. In my research, I also explored other research by Dr. Amara Dequere. In my research, I also explored um re- other research by Dr. Amara Dequere. I looked at Dr. Nadegh Ghamrawi's research, I looked at several other theses um that and dissertations that explored the um research about leadership in Islamic schools, uh principals in Islamic schools. Um um so I I looked extensively at at a lot of research, and and in particular, um Dr. Jones, Peter Jones's research about Islamic schooling in Australia. So there really is a disconnection, I think, between boards and school communities. And so when we say, if we allow ourselves to say that the board is there to support, the board has a very important responsibility. And sometimes uh saying that the board is there just to support, well, actually, no, the board is there to make sure that there is a continuous progression and continuity of the schools, uh of that particular school. And in 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 my humble opinion, that um progression and continuity is about aligning with the school's Islamic ethos. Uh we we are um stakeholders and stewards of um you know, the the instructions and the commands of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, to do good in this world. And you know, when we're in a leadership role, particularly in a voluntary leadership role, our role should be mainly to focus on our purpose, our action, and our attitude. Because our employment is not from the school, our employment is not from the board, our employment is from Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And so rather than say, shouldn't we be supporters rather than oversighters? Shouldn't we be supporters rather than controllers? Well, actually, what does Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, ask us to do? And then we follow that, that's my humble response to your question, Adrisa, I hope that answers it.
Yes, it does, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aida. Um one of the, one of the things we advise our our boards when we go into school for accreditation purposes is that they're, one of their roles is really to safeguard the mission of the school. And that's something that the community has come together and decided. So you know, having that input, having, getting that feedback when determining the mission and when renewing and revising the mission. And then the board responsibility is to safeguard that mission. Um I see that Leila had a question, Leila, would you like to unmute your microphone and ask?
Yes, Salaam alaikum, uh again, thank you so much, Dr. Aida, um for this amazing research. I I wanted to understand a little bit more about how uh the boards, these particular, in these particular schools, what their criteria is for um bringing board mem- or the board members, becoming board members, and then how they hold themselves accountable. Um and can you talk about that a little bit?
Thank you, Sister Leila, yes, a very, very, that's an interesting question. Um that's a really interesting question. Um in terms of criteria, in terms of board membership and selection, it really differs from school to school. Some schools, in my discussions with directors, some schools have a uh a set of selection criteria that they ask directors to complete. Other schools follow the mandatory governance guidelines. And within those guidelines, there is a strong uh focus on um conflict of interest to ensure, because one of the biggest issues that came out of the internal, the independent audits that the um Commonwealth did on some Islamic schools was the issue of conflict of interest. Okay? And so um essentially, what what happened, what has happened, what is still happening is there is still this strong focus on compliance. So in other words, directors who are able to ensure um that they have no conflicts of interest, whether perceived or believed, then um they're eligible to sit on the board. Directors are also, some directors are also, and generally, the Islamic schooling sector in Australia, boards are selected, um directors are selected uh more recently rather than previously. Uh directors are selected based on their uh skills and expertise. So we call that in uh governance research as a resource-dependent model, where uh directors or or founding members in particular are very strategic about who they pick to come and sit on the board uh in order to meet compliance. Uh how do I respond to that? I respond to that, that this is why Islamic school boards are focused so much on compliance. And there is often some oversight in terms of Islamic education, strategic planning, and um really important curriculum continuity and renewal. Because it's hindering, focusing on compliance hinders your ability to think more broadly.
So Dr. Aida, it sounds similar to what happens in American Islamic schools, where we don't have the government um uh financial support, and boards focus on finances, making sure that we have high enrollment, um sustaining um fundability, so that eh and what off- often happens is that all other aspects of the school are kind of set aside, and the focus is so much on financial support and making sure that that the school is financially stable, but not um a whole lot on, you know, uh the the leadership, the vision. Although their their uh responsibilities uphold the mission, that focus on finances becomes overwhelming and becomes a deterrent. Um so it sounds like similar, the structure may be different, but very similar problems. And again, I I can, um the analogy of conflict of interest. One of our biggest problems um with our boards that in our experience has been when um board members interfere with the day-to-day management of the school. Um they have relationships with parents that um preclude or exclude the 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 principal. Um so the the it's it's interesting that regardless of the structure, um the problems seem to be very similar in our schools. So I thank you so much for sharing that.
No problem. I just want to, I just want to add um to that discussion about, in terms of criteria, in terms of board selection. Something that is really critical, I think, to this this discussion about governance is and and this is something that I think has started to emerge in terms of discussion amongst Islamic schools is the relationship between the principal and the board. And someone might have a question, I'm probably going to answer that question now, but um it's really important for, when we select directors who understand what they're doing in terms of management, uh in terms of leadership, because um the role of the director on the board is oversight, yes, to make sure that funding is spent ethically. The role of the director is to also select the right person for the job to lead the school. And so the people that we select on our boards uh also really uh need to understand uh what it means to manage, to lead, because a principal is a leader. A principal is a change maker. A principal is a motivator, a principal is someone who plays such a critical role to ensuring schools' school success. And so what I invite people to think about is what is the criteria for selecting a principal for a school? Is the criteria because the principal is a friend, because the directors are founding members of a school that they established? I'm having very frank discussions. Okay, in a, on a platform that is really needed in our sector. Or is the principal someone who is uh who really is embedded into the school's ethos, understands what the school, the purpose of the of that particular school is? What is it that, does that person understand what the parents want, what the children need? Does that person really have a really embedded understanding of Islamic education? Because the mainstream curriculum is something that a principal would have studied at university. Because the requirement is that the principal has a degree in education or a PhD in 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 another discipline, right? So I think that's a really important discussion, and that starts with the people that we um recruit on our boards.
Thank you so much, so important. Um one of the most important things the school board can do is hire the right principal. I know we're running out of time, I do have um one last thing, I'm hoping if you would address that, one of the questions that was asked about is, has to do with, you know, the gender roles on the board, and how there is such a power struggle between men and women who run Islamic schools, and why is it that men seem to have the tendency to have the upper hand? And I don't know if you've seen that in the research that you've done.
Sister Sophia.
I wanted to throw that in, I just was, I know that we we see this happening in in the boards in our Islamic schools and
In 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 a uh in a dialogue of professionals. Within a dialogue of professionals, what I'd humbly uh uh like to do is uh share a paragraph from the final reflections in my thesis. Okay? So, Bismillah rahman rahim. Islamic school boards also present issues with the lack of women on boards. At the time of data collection, the study highlighted, to my knowledge, there were six female directors in Islamic school boards across the fourteen Islamic schools in New South Wales. Of these directors, two agreed to participate in the study, and the remainder avoided a response to cause to participate. Women play an essential role in the Muslim community, yet often appear invisible in leadership structures of Islamic institutions. It is not yet widely known, from the perspective of a Muslim woman, why this is the case. Nevertheless, according to one potential participant, Muslim women find it challenging to coexist in male-dominated environments because it may impact their domestic and career aspirations. Consequently, Islamic schools across the sector reflect similar administrative structures, educational outcomes, religious practices, discipline structures, and extracurricular activities. Yet Islamic schools differ in diversity, religious sects, and compositions of beliefs, which raises questions about the universality of the Islamic schooling sector. This identifies a lack of nuance, creativity, and innovation in the structural design and contemplates the purpose and intentions of those who establish these schools. Essentially, what I'm calling out is that women who are predominantly the educators within our Islamic schools rarely have the opportunity to exist in executive positions, particularly in board positions. Um and this is something that is, I think, uh and um Dr. Saeda Shah has mentioned this in in her book on leadership in Islamic schools. But this is particularly um something that is really driven by exactly what this participant, who who was very reluctant and did not participate, said to me, that it creates issues within her domestic and professional structure. And so having these conversations about, okay, again, what is the criteria that we're looking for when we're selecting directors? What is the criteria of the principle that we are searching for? Do we want a principal to be a person who is um male dominant, who has male attributes, which is not wrong? We're not saying that this is wrong, but what we're saying is, is a female principal or a female director uh more capable of making a contribution that is going to influence change, uh influence continuity, uh and really establish a structure within the school and make a contribution to the school that is going to have impact on our children, this is about our children. This is not about whether there are five males or or five females on the board. This is about our children. What's the problem with having an all-female board? If they understand the requirements of what our children need, um uh there's no problem having all males on the board. But uh what's what's the problem with having females? Eh I I don't understand that. So for further discussion, it's actually a paper I'm writing. Thanks, Lea.
Thank you so much. Um we really appreciate that you took the time to be with us. This is our our third scholar series session for the Global Association of Islamic Schools. Really do appreciate everyone who came out and 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 I would like to just, I know, I wish we had more time, but I know we need to be cognizant of everyone's time, very valuable. And I'd like to ask Brother Akas, please, if you can make closing gha'f for us.
Thank you so much, Sophia, thank you, everyone.
Salaam alaikum, everyone, and thank you, Sister Dr. Aida. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala give us to free to implement what we have heard and bring transformation in our schools and communities, Insha'Allah. Just as a closing dua, the Sahabah Jma'in, what they would do when they would uh depart from a gathering, what they would do, a Sunnah of the Sahabah would be to recite uh Wal Asr, Inna l'insana la fee xusr, illa ladina amalu wa amilu suwali hati wa tawasob al-haqi wa tawasob al-sab. We have spoken good, we have shared good, nasiha. What we need to do is now bring this into action and spread this in our communities with patience, Insha'Allah. Subhanallahumma wa bihamdika, Ashadualla ilaha illa anta astaghfiruka wa tuwuk alaik. Subhanallah, Rabbika, Rabbil Azza Tiyamiya, Amma Yasifun, Wa Salaam ala la la, Mursalin, Wa Alhamdulillahi, Rabbil Alamin.
Salaam alaikum, thank you so much, everyone.